One of these for each basin. Then, then we said, okay, well, acquiring land on the Ala Palms, even if it's a thirty by thirty, or forty by forty, or a fifty by fifty pump station site, you know, it can't go in right away. So you gotta get that property from somewhere. A reasonable estimate at this time, until you get specific to a property, would be, we prorated the land values in the RMC office, and it's not called the RMC office anymore, but to get a number, because it's a plug number. It's, you know, three quarters of a million dollars, so we thought that was important to include. And then we did, this is just a summary of each one of those basins. So on the left, you know, you got A, B, C, D, twenty, what, et cetera, and the cost of each one. You got hard cost, soft cost, total, and then we rounded them up, and then we have some potential costs. Until you get into the full design, the real detail, you're not going to be a hundred percent sure that you need that cost or not. So this is worst case, that we thought, we need to present worst case, and if we come back lower, that's good, but not to miss it by, it's almost two million dollars right there, so. And then we said, okay, well, now we know what this layout is. How would you phase this to get it back down basically to the Forest Trails plant? The Wild Doones also has a, a plant. It's an aged, very aged steel package plant. It's wastewater is a very harsh environment, and you know, the beach is very harsh. So the deterioration of that aged plant is really starting to pick up. So the cost to maintain it, status quo, is going up and up every year. To the point that it's not effective to keep that, pooping a Band-Aid on that one. So this, the basis was, everything goes to Wild, to Forest Trails, which was recently replaced. It has a new technology called MBR, membrane bioreactor, which is a, it's a tertiary level treatment, advanced treatment, reclaimed water. It's a very clean water. In fact, Ala Palms has no detect of any bacteria in it prior to disinfecting it. So technically, I mean, they don't have to disinfect, but they do because it's, it's a requirement. So we looked at phases of how you would get all of that new and existing flow back down to Forest Trails site, because that would be where a plant would be consolidated. This is just a phasing plan. To, you know, A, to, you're not going to start in that end of the island and transport everything new to that. You're kind of starting over the plant and work out. And what is a reasonable phase that it's not too big, that it takes forever? You sort of kind of piecemeal it again, so that gives you like an eight wheeler window. And then we projected those costs out into those dollars. So the last column here is two thousand and twenty-eight dollars, and it's, you know, inflated. So whatever our number was today, we inflated it by his, you know, historical rate. I think it's two point three percent inflation rate historically for that many years to get those numbers. Okay, so then, we kind of finished with the, those gravity sewer and the collection and the transport. Now we're focused on the wastewater plant. So the, ultimately, you would want to replace the existing Wild Doones plant and put everything at Forest Trails. It's a lot more efficient that way. You get a lot better water, clean water. But one of the things we want to look at is how much equalization do you need? So that you have a kind of a constant inflow into that treatment process. But the peaks are going up and down as people are using water and flushing, and pumps are coming on off. So we try to look at what more storage do you need that you don't already have? And that's about a hundred and fifty thousand gallons extra. So there's more equalization storages, we call it, or EQ. And that's, I mean, that's cost that you have to build into the plan. So then we did a layout of, it's probably really hard for you guys to see. We have an existing plant, and then what would be the, the new plant? So the baseline is that Ala Palms Water and Sewer Commission was fortunate enough to receive a grant, a significant grant, of replacing what's at Wild Doones. But it's a very finite window. So this is showing you that finite window, so that we're still complying with that grant number. But then, this is, you know, it's a little bit bigger, if you can see that, but it's got the more things that you're going to need long-term. Some odor controls, people don't smell it. Hopefully, if anybody been by the existing plant, it's really hard to smell wastewater. It's not very noisy either when, when things are running. And that's sort of the, all the other stuff, like the equalization I talked about, the odor control and those kind of things. So physically, we laid it out how you would do it. It gives you a master plan of how you would do it. And then we did costs on those, too. So those costs of, that, that first letter showed you about nine million to do that, and about ten for the rest, and so it's about a, almost a nineteen million dollar total. So with that, I wanted to kind of leave, that was sort of the completed our scope of what we were supposed to do. So it's a plan, can be used, you know, today, it could be used two years from now. It should be probably updated. Costs will change. We recommended that you look at some of those unit costs, and it's a spreadsheet where you plug number, and it changes them all, so it's kind of easy to do. But your prices will go back down, prices will go back up. And you need to keep looking at it every so often, of, are these numbers still in that range? So that kind of gives you the, the basis of what we did. You know, to me, the next steps are, well, it's great to have a plan, but to implement it, you've got to have money to pay for it. So the next steps, to me, would be, you know, focus on funding strategies. How do you fund those things? There's a lot of different ways to do that. There's some opportunities, there's also some constraints. But I think whoever that sets that policy needs to start thinking about that and exploring those. And to me, there's, you know, there's internal sources, which is existing customer base, you know, raise rates. You can get loans, but loans have to be paid back, and customers pay those. You can get some grants. They have some criteria that you have to meet, but usually, it's free money. For example, the FEMA grant I mentioned before, that's free money. We just have to jump through a lot of hoops, but it doesn't cost anything to the customers, so. It helps offset the total cost. And then it, the question is external sources of, you know, other users. And I'm going to make this point because it, you heard it a lot about the traffic and all that. Normally, and that goes back to my average daily flow, a little over a one million, but the, the four-month peak, the peak flow was way up there. The, the visitors, tourists, summer residents causes spike. And you've got to be able to handle the spike, you just can't handle that baseline. So to me, the question would be, who pays for that extra? And is it more a burden to the, the people that use it like that compared to the people that live here, you know, year-round? And, and Colin could have a smaller system, less expensive, if those people weren't here. So I mean, that's sort of a policy you've got to, kind of look at. So, you know, do you do that in fees or taxes, and, you know, who should be paying for that kind of thing? And then, to me, one of the important things is be able to, if you're going to do a phase, any phase, you've got to get that pump station site, because it's a significant number, and it really locks you into where everything else goes. So begin negotiations on whatever you identify as the first phase. And then I think you've got to take the numbers we did and go back to that capital improvement project, as I said, the CIP, and update that and insert these wherever you decide they want to be or need to be, or you can afford to do them. And then look at some economies of doing some joint projects, whether it be with, say, the DOT, who's going to overlay a road, maybe in our lifetime. But, you know, if they're going to do that, then you get in there and make the mess, so they're really paying for that cleanup, or part of that cleanup, so, that kind of thing. And then you kind of look at, is there any cost-sharing strategies that can be done? You know, between the city, Ala Palms Water and Sewer Commission, the DOT, the Wild Doones folks? I don't know. I mean, I'm sure there's other options, which we haven't exhausted, but I mean, I think you've got to look at that window to do that. And I think you probably, once you kind of sort of have that funding plan, if you want to call it, lack of a better term, look at how it really affects rates, you know? Where the money comes from, how is it signed, and how do you pay back? And how does it affect your customers, is kind of the thing. And then I think you, you know, if it needs to be done, you go to Phase One, get that first pump station site, set the funding in motion and, and start. Because it's only going to get more expensive, and it, there's going to be a point you, you have to do it. And when you have to do it, it's really going to be more expensive, and your, your timing is going to be tight. You're going to have to do it by a deadline, whether it's DHEC or EPA saying you've got to do it, or we keep getting rainfall events that are so bad that seven things don't work very well. You know, at some point, somebody's going to make you do it. So I think it might be proactive, good to be proactive about setting some wheels and more, at least think about it, so. And that's really it.
Thank you for a lot of that information. And luckily, we have Dana Love here with Ala Palms Water and Sewer Commission. And we've had a year of, a memorandum of understanding, trying to work together. Something that we're going to try to get together in the near future. Linda Tucker's here, who's also worked on that same memorandum. So we've got a lot of work ahead of us. We've got to get our heads together. We've got to sit down and, and start looking at the future, because I think everybody does want to be proactive. And we've just, we've got a lot on our platter, but we've got to think about the future and what we're going to leave everyone.
Yeah, and I, you know, if you look in the East Coast, especially Florida, there are other places that have been in this situation and are doing things. So there's probably some things you can grab and say, I like that, I don't like that, and come up with a plan as you work through it, so.
Well, again, I think what we need to do is get the city together with the Water and Sewer Commission, and probably with you, and start trying to get a groundwork of where we're going and how we're going to get there.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
If you don't want to take questions now, given the hour of the night, I understand that, and our patient guests, what mechanism can we get back and direct some questions?
First, first thing we need to do is get the two entities together and start talking about it. And we've been working for a year on that. If I'm not mistaken, Desiree has reached out across the street to try to put a meeting together. We have not been successful yet in getting that meeting, but that's step number one.
And that would be Public Works or a special committee?
It's the city, with the Water and Sewer Commission.
Yeah, but what's the vehicle? What's the mechanism? Is it going to be at a committee level? It's going to be full councils? It's going to be staff only?
We're going to, all council will be involved in this, but first, we need to have this first meeting with Desiree and Dana. And Dana, it's always great to welcome any of us to come to their committee meetings, anytime. And, but again, we've got to get the two together.
Obviously, it's very involved, it's very important, it's critically important to the island. And thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
We'll look forward to following up.
Mark, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry you had to wait so long, but again, this is, that's in action. And we haven't even started our agenda yet. Thank you. Dana, come on up, yes, sir. You're a great citizen.
I hope so.
I know so. Denise, tell yourself as name, address, and who, who you represent.
I'm Dana Love, live at nine Sand Dollar Drive on the island. Mayor, members of council, fellow residents of the island. I'm talking to you tonight not as a resident, but as chairman of the Ala Palms Water and Sewer Commission. And I'm here to oppose the proposed franchise tax. The island, the Ala Palms Water and Sewer Commission was established by the city, and as my memory serves me right, it's about in the sixties or seventies. If y'all have lived here longer than me, you can nail it down below than that. Anyway, we were charged with building, operating, and maintaining water and sewer facilities to serve the city, but we are autonomous from the city. The only thing we can do, the only thing we cannot do is incur debt. The city incurs the debt to pay for the building, operating, and maintaining the facilities, but the Water and Sewer Commission pays for that debt. It's all paid for by charges that we impose on residents, on customers of the commission. We feel that the franchise tax is an additional tax that does not, as we understand it, directly benefit the Water and Sewer Commission, and that we are then acting as a tax collection agency for the city. And that's not part of the duties that we were given when the commission was established. And that's the basic reason for our opposition to having a franchise tax imposed on our customers through us. And that's basically, basically what I want to say.
Dana, thank you. And again, please know that we're going to be getting together with you and Linda and Desiree as a first step, and then we will all be getting together to better understand what our future is going to be.
We look forward to that. We know that we've got a lot of work to do in the future. There's many things on that side of the street that have to be done. And that's what we're to do, with guidance from you all, assistance from you all, which we dearly need, and we certainly, as other people said, appreciate what you all have to do. There's no way I would be a member of council. Thank you very much. My, my pap didn't raise no good-looking children, but he didn't raise no fools either.
Okay, we're going to move on to our reports from standing committees. And I'm going to ask everybody to try to, because of the hour already, to try to streamline your reports to what is really important and to...
Second.
Here, here.
Okay. Ways and Means.
Yep, yep, there is my report. No, Ways and Means made April sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And I'm just going to do a very brief run-through of revenues and expenditures. In all funds, revenues, year-to-date, we're three-quarters way through the year. And we're at seventy-one percent of revenues. And expenditures, year-to-date, actual as to percentage of what the budget is, fifty-five percent. Right now, we're projecting, at the end of the year, forecast above budget revenues, two hundred and thirty-two thousand. And below budget and expenditures of three million point three hundred and eighty-five thousand. The general fund revenues were forecasted to be above budget in year of five hundred and thirteen thousand. The percentage is at seventy-five percent at this point. The expenditures, the forecast is that be below, or you're, would be below budget by four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And the current, that's the current annual forecast. And the percentage of fiscal year nineteen budget expenditures is sixty-nine percent. Revenues is right on target, seventy-five. Cash balances, three thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, eighteen million. In all funds, eighteen million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand versus last March of two thousand and eighteen, of seventeen million, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Fund balances are projected to be strong at six thirty, nineteen, total of seventeen million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand. March notes, business license billing payment revenues continue to outperform budget and ahead of fiscal year March two thousand and eighteen, about two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, thirty-eight percent, and fifty thousand dollars, twenty-two percent respectively. Revenues related to large Wild Doons construction project again in February, we forecast these revenues to exceed the fiscal year nineteen budget by approximately four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, at six thirteen. Total general fund expenditures forecast to be under budget by approximately four hundred and twenty-six thousand due to vacant positions and lower-than-budgeted legal, professional, and tuition reimbursement costs. Fire department overtime is stabilized, and this department is on track to end the year on budget. Current forecast for nineteen, a general fund, will end the year approximately nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to the good as compared to budget. This assumes all transfers in happen as budgeted. The forecast included, in fiscal year twenty, budget documents all of this gain's rolling capital project fund at year end. March parking revenues were approximately seventy-seven thousand dollars, which, I use a little help here, I think it was about thirty-five thousand and a half last year at this time. Including proceeds from home, home street kiosks, lot kiosks, annual parking pass sales, and hotel parking equipment. The receipt, here's some good news. The city received CTC and TST grants totaling three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in March related to the drainage phase-two projects. I'm not going to go into all the other details, y'all have the schedules. We'll entertain any questions at this time. Okay, there is my report.
Do we have some action items?
Uh, yes, we do. And I will let you read those off, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have an award of a contractor of Moneran Prior Technics in amount of twenty-five thousand for the July fourth fireworks display.
Moved, approved?
Second.
Any discussion? This is the last year of a three-year contract, and I think somebody said they did not want to be the one who does not.
I think that was me.
So we have, any other discussion? Here or none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it unanimously. Number two, an award of a contractor leading associates to act as the city's real estate consultant relative to the RFP for the Marina Restaurant in amount of six percent of the gross lease payable to the, at the lease execution.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Yes, sir.
Couple of questions. Last week, when we discussed this, I did vote against it, it was approved. I asked if we had checked the references with this vendor. Have we checked the references since then? I, I don't see how we award a contract, and if I understand the budget number, we estimate that the six percent will be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Of course, we can't iron that down specifically, we don't know what the agreement's going to be. But a contract in the range of six figures without checking references? I don't understand how we can support that.
Anyone else? Here or none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Eight to one. All right, number three. Approval of change order for civil site environmental in amount of thirteen thousand, one thirty-six, fifty-four for labor and materials to adjust the depth of the section of the pipe adjacent to the Morgan Place Drive within Wild Doones. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Here or none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous. Number four, contractor of Ravenel Ford in amount of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight for the purchase of a one Ford F-150 pickup truck for the fire department. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous. Approval of a change order from Thomas and Hutton in amount of thirteen thousand to cover the cost-meeting expenses.
So moved.
Thank you very much. Any second?
Second.
And discussion? Here or none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it unanimously. Approved, this is good when it gets to this late, because everybody's just running along here.
Don't jinx the next one.
Yeah, we're going to hit the brakes.
Approval of an expenditure not to exceed eight thousand five hundred for the purchase and installation of a water fountain and bottle filling station at front beach.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, so let, let the public hear, it's eighty-five hundred dollars, that this water fountain is proposed. First question is, is it in the budget?
It's going, it's coming out of accommodations test.
Okay, so it's not in the budget, it's eighty-five hundred dollars for a water fountain. We suggested a committee that we seek a sponsor for said water fountain.
Oh, it is in the budget.
It is in the budget.
It's in the budget.
So it was suggested we get a sponsor, a sponsor, get a business, put their sign on it. Has that been attempted?
It's been approached by the Ala Beach Cleanup Crew, and the owner, I'm sorry, no. The owner of the beach and chair umbrella, who happens to be also a member of the beach cleanup crew, suggesting that they would, that they see opportunities for them to make a potential donation towards this. But I do want to clarify, the action items says that not to exceed. We are evaluating alternative options for the installation. The actual cost of the water fountain is forty-three hundred, forty-three hundred dollars. The cost for installation, the first, one of the estimates that we've received is around thirty-five hundred dollars. Norma Jean and I have been talking about potentially having the recreation department staff install it. It is not the same as installing the water fountain here. It's a little bit more complicated, but we do see an opportunity there to reduce the installation expense. And if, if we're able to do that, we will not, we will not spend the eighty-five hundred dollars as approved.
My understanding is that it's to be placed outside. There are two existing water fountains, and of course, sinks within the restrooms there. Is there a service fee associated with this?
There is not.
Okay. You're going to have increased annual maintenance costs. It's exposed, and somebody contacted the Water and Sewer Authority to see if they would sponsor it, install it, help save costs. It's not my hope just to oppose it, the merits of this, the merits...
It sure feels like that.
The merits, the, well, let, let me suggest what's important when you oppose something, is you offer alternatives. The merits are very important, right? We want to have reusable water bottles. That's the objective. There are other ways in which to do this. There are other ways in which to cut your cost. I've offered several. Do we still employ somebody at the front beach restrooms?
Yeah.
That services the restrooms?
We do.
Okay, so we employ somebody there. Why not get a water cooler, get a little doggy bowl, have the person that we employ there, that I don't think is overworked, go ahead and fill it up several times.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, and a second, yes, sir.
I'd like to comment as well. I, I asked, I think, some good questions. This is supposedly some heavy-duty, expensive water fountain. What's the warranty?
It is one year for normal usage, and we do have...
Normal usage being at a beach?
Yes, outdoor. We have similar water fountains at the rec center. I think Norma Jean can speak to that. They've been there for multiple years, and rarely they've had to be replaced by the same company.
I just make the same comment I made, it looks like a solution looking for a problem.
Okay, but remember, most of the work will be done underground. It's the top portion that if there's any problem, it will be replaced. There's another question? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still kind of confused why we're putting a water fountain in an area where there are several different sources of water that you could fill your bottles with, whereas we have other places that have no water, have nothing that you can get, all the way up and down every, our beach.
I think this is the beginning of a good hydration station sort of movement. We're trying to walk the walk and have places where families can refill their water bottles and not create waste.
But why can't they do it in the bathrooms?
Because people just, it's not as appealing. People don't want to go and try and put their, their bottle under it, their motion-detected sinks. I mean, this is, we're trying to do the right thing. I've been trying, it's just a positive, it's really a positive.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
So I'll just say, there is a clear problem where, that we've established of litter at the beach, people bringing plastic water bottles is a huge, makes up a huge amount of the trash that we find at the beach. So we definitely have a problem, and this is part of the solution. That should be clear to everybody. This is a water station that encourages people to be able to use this. A lot of these aren't going to fit in a, in a sink in the bathroom, and that's actually kind of gross, too, to try and think about putting that underneath a faucet in the bathroom. It will be cool water, it will be appealing, and it will encourage people not to bring trash to the beach.
Any other comments?
Yes.
You've talked twice.
No, I asked a series of questions once, and I'll ask more questions, and now I'm going to make my comment. You know, this is a relatively small item, right? An eleven-million-dollar budget, we're talking about eighty-five hundred dollars. But as an example, in the FY twenty budget we're proposing, we have thirteen percent increase over the nineteen budget. We're not cutting our cost... We're not cutting our cost, I want to know where the fiscal conservatives are, and we're talking about an extensive elaborate water fountain for a puppy, and you can get an orange container out there and fill your water bottle up. And you can get an ice machine if you want to make it cool, and you can do both of those things for less than a thousand dollars and put the person to work that's working at the restrooms. It's just excessive, we all agree with the merits.
Call for the vote.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of purchasing this for not to exceed eighty-five hundred dollars signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Raise your hands, please. Okay, Marie, did you get that? Okay, all nays?
Nay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Six, three.
Since two thousand two, I've been working for that.
Good job, Carol. Okay, moving on, approval of implementation of a three percent franchise fee on the Isle Palms Water and Sewer. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion?
Yes, so let me provide a little, a little content.
Timer.
Put it on the timer, it's number one, and it'll go as long as you want it to go.
There's a limit of ten minutes.
As long as I want it to go, I think, I think we can come under that. This is number, this is number one. First of all, we have a franchise fee on every other utility on the island. So what's equitable here? Why don't we have one on water and sewer? Arguably, water is the most important utility that we have.
You just voted against a water fountain.
Did you not hear? A cooler, a cooler, less than a hundred dollars, not eighty-five hundred.
I'm sorry, I just couldn't help.
We have, as you heard, that's a good one, Carol, we, we have, as you heard, a major activity that's important to the health and safety of this island. It's important to all of your real estate property values, it's important to the visitors and the residents to get this island on sewer, it should have happened years ago. We're talking about a minimum three percent fee. We all need to contribute to ensure that the island maintains its environment, its health and safety. If we don't, we do it at our own peril. If we look at it and say, oh, it's too big and complicated for us to comprehend and ignore it, there's going to be a problem. And one of the things you heard a few minutes ago by Mark is let's get out ahead of it, although I'd argue we're in the rears at least ten years, or you're going to have the regulatory agencies coming down on us. So take the initiative. That report, by the way, came out four months ago. Why did it take four months to get across the street? We have public works meetings since then, we've had Ways and Means Committee meetings since then, and it's not a tax, it is a fee. How they choose to pass, choose to pass on that fee or choose not to is a business decision that they make. They have a significant reserves, they could take that out of their reserves. The proposal also is, we would isolate those funds to be used to cover our cost of expenses as we advance the implementation of a sewer-wide system on the island. Now, three of the women up here on council have voted that it should be the goal in committee to get implementation wide on the island. Two individuals up here, males, have voted that in the past at a committee. It's come out of committee, the last two councils unanimously, the Public Works Committee, that we should have an island-wide system. I would propose this council stand up and make a point that by 2030, the island has full connectivity to the sewer system. And there's some economies of scales, and there's some leveraging we can do here. Our best work is when we set policy and direct staff to go do it. Why don't we tell them to go implement it and get out of their way? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Um, thank you. You'll have your chance.
I'm sorry, Randy, I'm just trying to be balanced here.
Yeah, that's okay. Uh, so, I voted to move this forward in the last Ways and Means meeting, and I've since done a little bit of digging and a little bit of reflecting on why and when you should use a franchise fee. And the conclusion that I've come to is, first of all, franchise fees are supposed to be used when the fees collected are used explicitly for the purpose of enhancing and maintaining the infrastructure for which they're being collected. And what I've heard is that the way in which we're collecting this fee and will not be able to directly make that case. There's an active, at least one active lawsuit case that came up with a quick Google search of residents actually suing the city because they are collecting franchise fees that aren't being used in the, in a very transparent manner, which goes to the other point, that franchise fees are truly a tax. And in this case, where we have one provider of water and sewer that was formed and appointed by the city, it is absolutely going to be a tax, and it's absolutely a service that's essential and used by every single resident on this island. And so, I would propose that if we intend to raise funds for this purpose, as we all agree that we need to, to Councilmember Kinghorn's point, we all, no one disagrees that it's important that we raise funds, that we pursue enhancement and expansion of our infrastructure, particularly for sewage and drainer, drainage, that we do it with taxes and we do, we do it transparently to the citizens.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Same comments I made at Ways and Means. I, I, and by the way, totally concur with Councilmember Kinghorn's comments about why does it take four months? I mean, there's a couple of issues here. I don't know what the issue is in collaborating with the Water and Sewer Department, but it's very disillusioning sitting here that there isn't more active conversation, that it takes four months to get a meeting set up, and I think we should instruct the city to go back to them and say, you know, let's fix the relationship. Having a discussion with this franchise fee, and I brought it up the last time, people already on sewer are paying roughly double what people on septic are paying, right? If, if anyone, I'm on sewer, you can expect your bill is equal on the sewer side as it is on the water side. So I don't know if the opportunity is there to have a fee just on water, so it's equitable across the community. But I got to tell you, you, you go out and tell citizens that are paying a hundred dollars a month for sewer, that are on sewer, and are right now not part of the problem, that they're now going to have an increased fee over and above the people that, frankly, many people on septic have resisted this move to get off of septic. I don't know how you equitably have that conversation as a council and say this is doing the right thing. So for that reason, and that reason alone, I, I think we need a broader policy, I think we need broader discussion, I think we need to give a little more thought to it.
Okay, any other conversation on the three percent franchise fee? Hearing none, calling for the vote, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those against, say nay?
Nay.
I believe that's eight to one. Okay, award of a contractor Benson Ford for one Ford interceptor sedan with all-wheel drive in amount of twenty-four thousand nine ninety in budget. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
There we go, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous. All right, moving on, public safety.
Yes, sir, Ms. Mary, let me try my notes real quick. Uh, the Public Safety Committee met, and I'll keep this brief, met on Tuesday, April second, nine AM, all committee members were present, under citizens' comments, we had Ted McKnight from Tushad Row talk about parking and his concerns relative to line and sight parking with beach access paths, and it's something that we are actively working on right now. Um, we had, under new business, we had discussion of the Fourth of July fireworks display, which we just voted on and approved. We also had a presentation from Flover and Mobile App, which is a use-to-pay-to-park system, so it works in conjunction with our kiosk, so somebody can actually go on the phone and put in their license plate, pay for parking, as opposed to walking up to the kiosk now, that can be utilized both at the front beach area and in the parking lots, and the great part about this is it's no cost to the city, and hopefully we'll be getting this up and running here really soon, at least by Memorial Day, that'd be a great, a great goal. Um, it's also something that we can also use towards long-term goals as a paid, paid-to-park program initiative if we look elsewhere, elsewhere throughout the island. We had an update on installation of our stabilizing product, as you know, we've met with TrueGrid, and they're, they have provided the city with enough materials to mark four parking spots for a test, and after talking with SC DOT, the city is still required to submit an engineering plan for the installation. We had an update on the Stantex feasibility study as well, the, on the stabilizing product. An update on public transit, we, um, we're trying to work with SC DOT and have a public transit for businesses and employees to park over Mount Pleasant and have them shuttle over here to the Isle Palms. Cog has requested layouts for the vans and understand how many people will be using a lot in the vans, and they'll be basically be parking at the Mount Pleasant old bylo and, and then be transported over here, over to the Isle Palms. We had some discussion of coyote management, there wasn't a whole lot of captures this past month, but like we've always said, we're not going to, we're not going to leg track, we're not going to trap ourselves onto this problem, but we are, we are moving forward, though, we're meeting with Wild Dunes tomorrow, and hopefully we'll have a good, good discussion with that. In order to get ahead of this thing, we really need to get into Wild Dunes and have the ability to work in there and be a little more creative with our capture program, and we can only do that from inside the gigs. An update on beach handicap accessibility, we've had this discussion been going on for a while, and state law basically mandates that we have to allow access to the beach for handicapped personnel, people, and by means of, and then state law says by motorized wheelchair or cart. So, and the state law actually regulates that you can have a golf cart on the beach with appropriate documentation, as in handicap placard, and has to be registered with the state, with the state registration. So, so don't be surprised if you start seeing some handicapped golf carts on, on the beach as well. The status of our law enforcement assessment with the police department, the city received proposals from three firms, and we'll be working on that within our next, discussing that within our next public safety meeting. We had a discussion of our budget, under new business, which is funny, we had a consideration of implementing a commercial film, video, and photography permit fee, basically so the people at the last minute wouldn't have to come through all these committees in order to make it happen, in order, if they're following, if they fall within the same protocol, if they fall within the, you know, the guidelines, and then it can be approved at staff level. The departments gave the reports, which were very brief, but our next meeting is scheduled for May sixth at nine AM.
Great report, any questions? Hearing none, moving on. Public Works.
Public Works Committee met Thursday, April fourth at nine AM, all members and appropriate staff were present, and minutes from the previous meeting were approved. Under citizens' comments, Caroline Bradner with the South Carolina Coastal Conservation League spoke to voice hers and the organization's support of expanding our plastic bag ban. More on that later. Director Pitts gave his report, garbage and yard debris were down, repairs were made to the breach inlet boat ramp, Public Works delivers daily trash removal service for the Methodist Tea Room, the Public Works crew cleaned eleven beach access paths last month, and over the summer, the landscaping company, the Greenery, the Greenery will take over the beach access paths, including Twenty-third Avenue, which we recently added to the list. We're still waiting to hear if recycling will be weekly this summer, and regarding the breach inlet ramp, we would like officially, Randy, Real Property, to consider if the ramp could be a resident-only ramp. Okay? So, lobbying. Under old business, phase two drainage, the project has been completed, just shy of as-built and final survey, and the balance of the contingency fund will be allocated toward phase three drainage, so that's great news. Phase three drainage, we should have recommendations from Thomas and Hutton in mid-May, so flowing right along with all of the Thomas and Hutton contracts. Update on the Public Works building renovations, it looks great, it's a huge improvement, there's new floors in there, new ceiling, new paint, it's, the space has been redesigned, and if you've not gotten a chance, please stop by and go look at it, it's a very long overdue facelift. Next, we discussed update on general ditches and drainage issues, the Forest Trail area, Director Kerr acknowledged that the requested lot subdivision on Forest Trail that was sent to the Planning Commission has generated a lot of controversy among other residents, primarily related to flooding. That area currently experiences tons of flooding, and it would just, it would be more if the subdivision took place in five houses where, where three is. So, if you want to hear more on that discussion in the interest of time, just please log on and listen. It was a very long discussion. Status of drainage improvement, over, improvement project on Ocean, and that is going to be done in October, and the city will contribute twenty-five thousand, but we'll get that back from FEMA, and then the county is handling the rest of that. We discussed the budget, which we did not have any changes in the Public Works budget since last meeting, and then we discussed the comprehensive sewer implementation at great length, and we've heard that tonight, so again, please refer to the minutes on the website if you want more on that topic. We then talked about our opportunities to use solar power on city buildings, and, and we think that that should be considered on the public safety building if we get a new roof. And then we did approve the change order for Thomas and Hutton for things we've just discussed. And then we just discussed single-use plastic bag bans, and so I'm going to, we had Councilmember Smith move to prohibit the use of single-use plastic bags, plastic straws, and styrofoam products on the beach to include a penalty of a hundred dollars per violation. So, we passed that unanimously. And then we discussed, it was a very, very interesting meeting, the implementation of a smoking ban on the beach. And so, at this point, I'd just like to say, this is a complicated subject, and I would like Attorney Copeland to provide us more information and with a roadmap on how to approach this to get the desired results. Our next meeting is Tuesday, May seventh, at four o'clock.
Great report, any questions?
It's complicated.
There is an action item on the public works.
Okay. And that is the consideration prohibiting the use of plastic and other foam products on the Isle Palms beach. So, oh, wait a minute, before I go, yes, can we hear a question?
Just have, just have a question about the single-use bags.
Well, should we make, get it?
We want to go through those, okay, and then go to discussion.
Okay, that's good. We have a motion to prohibit the use of plastic and other foam products on the Isle Palms, do I hear a motion?
I just, we need to include a penalty.
Okay. Council, it's a, to include a penalty of one hundred dollars per violation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now we have discussion, yes, ma'am.
A resident sent me a picture of what's called a mud mitt dispenser on Twenty-eighth, and it's plastic bags rather than those pooper scoopers. So the question was, if we're not doing plastic bags, why are we doing plastic bags at Twenty-eighth?
This will go in effect January one, twenty twenty.
I mean, we got them now, there, there's a box.
Yes, ma'am, I'm, I'm just talking about the overall ban on plastics, I think we're trying to follow suit with.
Is this like a pilot program to see if these work, or, I mean, it just showed up?
Well, it's a great idea, believe me.
No, it's plastic bags.
They're biodegradable, and we have been replacing the old wooden dog pooper scoopers with those.
The cardboard has plastic too.
Yeah, yeah, the cardboard has.
And that thick plastic.
Yes, and these are biodegradable, and we have installed those in multiple beach access paths, particularly the ones that have the new beach access sign.
Okay.
We've been replacing those.
So we can tell the residents that they're biodegradable, it's okay, don't worry about it, it's just that they showed up, and I didn't know anything about them, I didn't know if any other committee knew about it. Was it part of public safety?
One, those are, those are exempt in the ordinance, and those, we started doing that, I think, a year or two ago, we presented it to Topo Parks. We presented it to Topo Parks and indicated that our intent was to replace the old ones with that newer material.
So, may I?
Susan?
So, I think on the dog waste bags, I think the intent of the ordinance would be to apply to retail, single-use retail bags and not to all plastic bags. And so, I don't know if there's a, we might include dog waste bags as an exemption. So, yeah. And then, and then otherwise, I mean, the intent of this is really a messaging more than a active enforcement, but it sends the clear message that in addition to wanting our businesses to be more proactive in the packaging that they use, we want everybody who comes to the beach to be very aware of their footprint and the, you know, items that we do not want them to bring to the beach.
Mr. Bell?
Yeah. It's not the footprints I'm concerned with. As an owner of a large dog, I just want clarity. I pride myself on bringing extra bags to the beach for those who don't bother and I'm happy to share. So, if I have my Harris teeter bag from Mount Pleasant on the beach, can I use that or am I now, under this new version, required to use some other bag, right? And literally, how do you enforce that, right? So, that bag goes to the beach and comes to a receptacle, as it should, right? So, I just, I never thought I'd be talking about a subject this exciting at this hour.
Mount Pleasant is banning.
Mount Pleasant doesn't have bags anymore.
They don't have bags anymore.
I may have to go further inland to get my plastic bags. No, but I think, you know, I mean, it's a legitimate question and if I need to modify my behavior, I will do that.
Yes, sir.
Has the city contacted and really sat down and talked to the business owners affected and asked how they felt about all of this?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, we did.
You did?
Yes, we did.
We had a public meeting here and invited all of the owners, business owners from the island.
Did they all come? Some of them were busy running restaurants.
Everybody came, but we did have a good chunk of folks show up and ask questions and they were actually very supportive of the city's plan.
I know of several that are really odd about it.
Well, we deferred it one month because we had not contacted our business owners. So, during that month, we did contact them and I was a little dismayed at the number of people who showed up, but we did contact them.
Well, and so we've actually already passed the ordinance that affects the businesses. The feedback that I got from businesses was, please restrict what people take to the beach as well as restrict us. So, this is doing that and I think this piece of it is actually something that I've heard several business owners support.
Okay, now I'm going to get to speak, go ahead.
Well, I just want to say, I haven't had anybody tell me that this is a, not any, I mean, it's just been 100% support.
I haven't heard that.
Well, it's just, I hang out with the cool people. But it's, I mean, it has really been supported and I think.
He told the restaurant owners.
But this, but this doesn't.
This doesn't affect them, this is just to keep the beaches clean.
Okay, moving on. Just so you know, we, next month, Bally Beach, Sullivan Zone, Mount Pleasant and Isle of Palms, we're going to try to find a date to works. According, Senator Finn has asked us to try to make everything consistent across the board for the purposes of home rule and to fight against home rule. So, again, what we're passing tonight, it's still going to be fluid or solid, depending on the case.
No, no.
Yes, sir.
We're just saying, we're not passing anything tonight. We're just, we're just considering prohibiting, and then we still have two more readings.
That's correct.
Right, absolutely.
We can definitely take a look at it and see what the new ordinance will look like. Then we can go from there.
Right.
That's the intent.
Correct.
Okay, so, everybody's spoken. All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? Here and none, unanimous. Now, recreation.
Recreation Committee met Monday, April 1st with all members present. Our interim administrator, clerk and recreation director. Under citizens' comments, Dan Harvey, a full-time Grand Pavilion resident in Wild Dunes, expressed concerns about surfing instruction being allowed in that area because of lack of parking. Our recreation director, Norma Jean Page, delivered her report. We talked about usage of the rec center, looked at some grass of usage for Saturdays, Sundays and on weekdays, and a sample listing of classes for the week and about how the rec center publicizes its activities. Our rec staff has been busy with events, including the annual community yard sale at the end of March, which included 50 booths, the annual Easter egg hunt, which had a fantastic crowd this past weekend. Upcoming events include music in the park and summer camp registration kickoff on May 4th. Piccolo Spalletto sand sculpting competition at Front Beach will be June 1st. Isle of Palms Beach Run will be July 27th. We had an update on a franchise agreement for surfing lessons on the beach within Wild Dunes, but since then have heard from Wild Dunes Resort and Community Association that they do not want to move forward with that planned. So, we will be looking at this again in committee. We discussed plans for the 2019 Farmer's Market, which the city plans to downsize and move to the Recreation Department in the fall. We considered locations within the footprint and the likely need to switch the day of the week from Thursdays. In regard to the fiscal year 20 budget, we discussed adding in rec track software to introduce online registration, but because of the $31,000 cost and the possibility that a new generation of better, less costly alternatives might emerge, we decided to hold off on that. We recommended scaling back plans for Wi-Fi at the rec to limit it, just so it's offered inside the building. That will save us a few thousand dollars. And the possible, blah, 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 blah. But, yes, just so it's just inside the building and not include the grounds where we want to encourage people to put down their devices and interact with one another. We discussed plans that are now underway to add a coastal science class or presentation series geared toward adults. And finally, we reviewed social media input from the rec department's request for suggestions for new programs and talked about the support that we saw for a community pool, which is something we will be looking at more closely through the year. Therein ends my report.
Great report. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Quick clarification for the record. During the discussion about Councilmember Pinkhorn's suggestion that the city host a special event recognizing or commemorating the 30th anniversary of Hurricane Hugo, his intention was not to even consider a celebration, which how it was conveyed during the meeting and in the minutes. His suggestion was for the city to use the opportunity to educate and highlight how far the city has come when it comes to resiliency and emphasize the importance of emergency preparedness.
Yes, sir.
What does this talk about, a pool?
We're talking about a pool, but we did recognize in our discussion that if, that that would require a referendum. And so, that will be a big piece of our conversation.
Jimmy, in case you missed that, we're going to put it right next to the money tree.
Next to drainage and sewer and, okay.
And we, and we discussed also that we would likely, you know, be charging for memberships or admission to help fund that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Let me share with the chair that with regards to online registration, it's a convenience to our citizens. It'll pay for itself in three years by virtue of donations. I've done this before with other organizations and it's a wonderful thing if and when we get there.
I think the consensus was that we may have, as new technologies emerge, have some less costly infrastructure opportunities that we want to explore.
So, one question.
Yes.
So, do we know what day the farmer's market might fall on or what it looks like or?
It has not yet been determined.
Great report. Thank you very much. Move on. Personnel.
Personnel, okay. Yeah, we met a couple of times.
Few times, summary.
So, the Personnel Committee met on Tuesday, April 2nd at 5:00 PM. All committee members were present along with city staff. We did not have any citizen comments, but we did consider candidates for chiefs of police and coordinated some interviews on site, which have been completed. And I am happy to announce that we have, oh, come on, my notes aren't coming up.
Technology.
I know.
You're young, you have memory.
Well, anyhow, that's all right. There we go.
Oh, you got it.
So, we have a top candidate awaiting confirmation of background checks, reference checks and some other pertinent evals, but this candidate stood head and shoulders above the other candidates, even though there were some really qualified candidates that came through. And so, we expect that to, our committee to make a recommendation to full council at a special meeting sometime in the, in the next couple of weeks as those evals come back. Let's see, what else did we do?
That was a biggie.
Yeah, that was a big one. So, from there, we talked about the hiring process for the city administrator and assistant Public Works Director. And I'm going to give you a quick update on those two vacancies before we get to the vacancies report. Basically, Assistant Public Works, we've got a number of candidates who have just completed a pre-employment assessment and phone screening and then interviews will be taking place over the next couple of days and weeks, or days and week. So, we should have our final candidates and selection made very soon. I know Donnie and Winnet and Desiree are working closely on that. I also wanted to acknowledge that with the hiring process that we went through with the chief of police, we learned a lot, and me in particular, about working with council and staff to coordinate hiring process of a senior leadership position. And several of the things that we learned will be taking effect for the city administrator hiring position, hiring of that position and in the process that I'm about to describe. But basically, we're very happy with the quality of candidates and we will be inviting several candidates for, and more in-depth interview process that will be conducted with just the Personnel Committee. We will select finalists. It may be as many as three, it may be as few as two or as few as one. I, I don't know why I said as few as one, as few as two, as many as three or four that would be coming, invited to come on site for interviews. That city council would be invited to observe what are conducted by city staff and the Personnel Committee. That, the timeline for that, we anticipate the next round of interviews by Personnel Committee only to take place the week of May 8th, 9th and 10th. Thank you. And would like to coordinate onsite interviews two weeks from that week. So, before the end of May, we would like to have onsite interviews with any candidates for the city administrator position and.
Council submits questions.
Yeah, in terms of the interview question design, we will use a structured interview again. We'd like to get input from this full council in terms of which questions you would like to see submitted. Our committee and city staff will go through those questions and figure out the exact structure and which questions will be used to make the final interview design.
Clarifying question. So, unlike the police chief, the resumes were distributed to all of council for a down select and that input was collected. And just noted, in this process, no council member outside of Personnel Committee has seen a single resume. So, it feels inconsistent. And if we learned anything from the last process, is what we don't know about how to conduct this. So, you're asking, and I'm not saying I'm disagreeing, that the balance of council trusts your down-select process without having any input to that process other than to submit questions for you to ask to your selected candidates?
Yeah.
As stated by.
As stated by code, the Personnel Committee guides the hiring process. And what I learned was I was far too accommodating in the chief of police hiring process and it muddied it up. And so, we're going to take charge and we're going to give you finalists. The result of the chief of police hiring process got us where we needed to be. And I'm confident we'll get there faster and with less pain with this one.
Okay. Thank you.
With a smile on his face.
All right. We also talked about some other stuff. We got an update on ad hoc committees. And in fact, our top chief candidate suggested forming a citizen action committee unprompted by us. So, we don't, we didn't have a lot of updates, but that's still on our agenda. So, hopefully over the coming next month or two, we'll have something to say for how we can form some committees and engage our citizens who clearly want to get involved and take part in the way the city's run. We got an update on the status of boards and commissions, criteria for things like the appeals committee and voting board of zoning, planning commission, et cetera. We're still waiting on some reports from city staff on recommendations on that regard. We talked about the comprehensive strategic planning process for 2019 and put some funds in the budget to, to contract some outside external help to help take council through that process. We talked about establishing a director of human resources position and earmarked some funds in the budget for elevating that position and creating a more strategic HR role in our city. We talked about other budget matters. Specifically, the biggest change was adding a line item for employee training and the building department funds for software to track short-term rental properties. That will pay for itself because it should increase collections and efficiencies for the building department. We will meet again on May 7th at 8:30 in the City Hall Conference Room. And that is our meeting.
Wow. You had a busy month. Any questions for Personnel?
Oh, I missed vacancies. Police Department, we've got one communications tech and a couple of BSOs, fire department's full. Public Works, you know, we've got the assistant director, we've also got a CDL driver, we've got seasonal openings for the Recreation Department and the city administrator and general government. Now I'm done.
There you go. Any other questions? Here and none, moving on. Real Property.
Real Property. I'll try to keep it under an hour. The regular meeting of the Real Property Committee was held at 9:00 AM Wednesday, April 3rd. All council members were present, as were the interim city administrator for GOSU and city clerk. In citizens' comments, we had none. In comments from the Marina tenants, Jay Clark and Carla Pope, representing Morgan Creek, reported that the building structure under the walk-in cooler was found to be in stable condition at this time, but the engineer will recheck the structure in June. And he also has a plan to replace that part of the building structure in the fall. On the subject of parking, he wanted to have a meeting between the Marina manager, Brian Barrigan, and Title Wave to devise a better system for comedy parking. I believe that meeting did take place. He also reported that the paving, the anti-way to the restaurant was damaged. Were the boat ramp and other areas of the Marina due to the heavy equipment used for the rehab of the bulkhead and the replacement of the underground storage tanks. And manager Barrigan has arranged to have that paved areas on his side repaired with an asphalt product. Carla Pope, again, pleaded that we move this RFP process along as quickly as we can. And I think all council members stated, and I stated, that we're willing to have as many special meetings as necessary to keep the process moving, but it's a complicated process and there's just certain things in the timeline that we're unable to move forward. On a matter of capital improvements, Ms. Pope commented that the roof had to be repaired, the walk-in cooler had to be replaced, regardless of how the financial issues were worked out over the remaining term of the lease, and noted the difficulty with that given the nature of not having a bid award, not having this process moving faster than it has. Roof repairs are estimated between $50,000 and $70,000. Walk-in cooler would run about $120,000, including the structural repairs. Michael Fim, I'm going to get it right one of these days, guys. Thank the committee for the city's assistance in recent weeks. I'm not going to reiterate the comments that we've already all heard tonight about coming forward with a new lease proposal and the contribution to the city. And a comment was made that he said the lease would go out to bid. I want to make a couple of comments on that for clarity purposes. It's been the recommendation of the city attorney and the interim administrator that moving forward with a new lease would, per instructions and code, go out to bid. And I'm going to reiterate the same thing I've said to Michael in person. And I'm going to reiterate the same thing I've said to Michael in person. I would not want another water sports company there, right? So I stand by those comments. The question is, what do we do overall, longer term, with the Marina in contemplating whether or not we issue a new lease to Title Wave? And I think those are two very distinct subjects. I don't think anybody has, you know, backed off of saying that, you know, they run a quality operation down there. And Desiree, help me with, you know, where along in this agenda, we want to have the discussion about the renewal of the lease at the conclusion of my comments, or if it's appropriate now, we can have that discussion?
Well, it's under item three, Underwater Property Committee.
Okay, okay. So I'll keep blasting through this and then get to that, trying to go as fast as I can. In old business, there's a presentation of the building assessment report. We had not, at the time of that meeting, received the assessment report on the Morgan Creek Grill. I believe we will be covering that in the May 1st Real Property Committee meeting because we now have that report in our possession. That assessment's a high priority. It is a basis for what we know financially and otherwise we need to do within the RFP process for the Marina, and it is no doubt going to create some interesting financial discussions around the future of the Marina. We had consideration of the proposal from Lee and Associates, which we've already talked about, and it passed, so I'm not going to go into that in detail again. We had a presentation of 2018 beach monitoring and consideration of opportunities for the beaches at the south center of the island. It's a fairly lengthy conversation, I'm going to try to summarize. Steve Trainum and Dr. Tim Connor were attending the meeting to represent coastal science and engineering. Mr. Trainum reported that the most recent project was completed last spring, and they did the final survey of the project area in April 2018. They've been working since then compiling data into the report, and the winter storms delayed that process. But the beach project went very well, continues to look good. It added 800,000 cubic yards more of sand than the previous project, and the city got 50,000 cubic yards of sand over what it paid for. Always a good thing. Since 2012, the beach south of the pier has been relatively healthy, beginning with Hurricane Sandy. The entire shoreline suffered measurable erosion that triggered some degree of concern. And with storms Joaquin, Matthew, Irma, Florence, and other smaller storms over the past couple of months in the area, of the turn at breach inlet has become very erosional. The belief was that the area will eventually heal itself, but now it has become a concern. And due to the permitting process of one to two years, time that it takes to get the permits, CSE always advises that a permit be obtained before an area gets in crisis, and that those permits would be good for five years. So that is something I believe we continue to discuss with CSE. Update on the removal and replacement of the underground storage tanks at the IOP Marina. I was just having a conversation today. We are still trying to complete that project. We are experiencing some delays at the end of the project. Desiree, if you'd like to comment on that, you may please.
Sure. The fuel pumps have been installed and the concrete is virtually complete. The contractor is finishing up the electrical, and we're expecting the tunnel of the concrete to be installed this week. The electrical inspection and the fuel drop is scheduled for tomorrow, and the final dehack inspection expected this Friday, the 26th. The hose reels, which were approved by a chain of order recently, are on the way and will be installed in two weeks. The old ones will be used in the meantime. The temporary time that's in place will stay there for a couple of weeks, just to ensure that everything's working properly and that they have backup. Per the contract, the project was expected to be finally complete and closed out any days from the day of when the project started, or already two weeks of that. And the city is prepared to initiate the liquidated damages provision of the agreement.
Okay. Thank you. Update on Marina Dock's rehabilitation project. We continue to work with Kirby, Marshall, and ATM to get the permitting application documents ready to submit, and a meeting with the permitting agencies and tenants has been scheduled. I believe that is probably taking place by now, Desiree? On the ATM permits?
Kirby today confirmed, is trying to confirm the date. The hack we did not get narrowed down to the date, but we're working with the tenants, and our goal is to have a joint meeting with OCRM and the RPO.
Update on joint permitting process for existing Title Wave Water Sports. For those that aren't aware, we have a series of issues that we're trying to proactively work with Title Wave. Some of those are OCRM violations that were brought to their attention roughly in the November timeframe of last year. They were not brought to the attention of council until the end of March. We are collaboratively trying to address those issues. We don't know what the outcome of those will be with OCRM. We also have a centerline violation issue with the Army Corps of Engineers, which we've not yet gotten any word on. So while we look at the Title Wave issues, there are other complexities that come into play with these leases that I think everyone should remain aware of. And we'll talk a little bit more about that with this proposal. Update on the Public Safety Building Repairs Project. Trident are finishing the third week of investigative work with a few remaining tests to be completed. This was the forensic work on just how much work was going to be needed to be done at the public safety building. I think we'd put in the budget of $4 million. We've got our fingers crossed it doesn't take that much money, but until we get the, everybody smiles when you say hopefully not, we don't know. There's no surprises to date. That's the best news we have right now. Under new business, it was consideration of an ordinance amending Title V, Planning and Development, Chapter IV, Zoning, Article II, District Regulations Regarding Lots Subdivisions. This amendment states that future subdivisions of property will be slowed until the next drainage project is underway. We did have that discussion earlier, probably no need to go into any further detail on that. Consideration of Ordinance 2019-05, An Ordinance Amending Title VII, Chapter I, Business Licenses of the City of Isle of Palms Code of Ordinances Regarding the Increase in Short-Term Rental Licenses. Based on the discussions at the first budget workshop and subsequent council approval, the ordinance is doubled the base amount to $350 and the additional per thousand rate to $4.60, beginning with the next budget year. Public hearing was the public hearing we held tonight in regards to that. Consideration of Model Ordinance for Regulating Small Cell Installations. Interim Administrator Fregoso is working with the appropriate folks to look at what we do when 5G rolls out. For those that don't know, 5G is the next generation replacing 4G LTE. The towers are significantly different. They typically look more like a parking kiosk than they would a large, high-end tower. They're spread throughout the communities. And across the US, people are, smart municipalities are taking proactive steps to make sure that it is the cities controlling the installation of these, rather than relying on telecommunication companies to do it in the best interests of the city. So I applaud the proactive measures there. And we have a meeting next week scheduled as well, addressing this issue as a separate issue with somebody who's come to the city to give us some advice. Moving forward, discussion of Title Wave Water Sports lease. Without reading from these notes, I want to give a little bit of background and hopefully a little bit of humor. This seat, when you talk about these issues and you see the public passion, it's like a Gary Larson cartoon with a deer that says bummer of a birthmark during hunting season. There has been no discussion, contrary to social media and all this other stuff, of we are, quote, throwing Title Wave out. Personally, I find that dismaying. The only discussion that's been held is relative to the lease that they have. The lease that's currently in place states that council and the city is to advise them by one year before the termination of that lease. That existing lease as written would be a greenfield lease that would automatically renew if those terms were acceptable. Those terms, as stated, are $18,000 rent and 20% of gross profit above $300,000. For the last five years, those leases have not yielded more than $22,200 and some odd dollars, and excuse me if I'm off by $100 or so. Right? So it was the recommendation of the Real Property Committee that we go ahead and advise that we were not renewing that lease. Now, you can leap to a conversation that says renew and negotiate. That was suggested at the Ways and Means. I'm sorry, but, you know, proper fiduciary responsibility says terminate the lease. There's no lease that's going to approximate and look anything like this current lease. That is not a renewal. It has been the advice of our city attorney and our interim administrator, and this is where the bid discussion comes in, that we follow good, sound city procedure, issue a bid. And we could write a bid that's very tight, that says the only people that could comply with that bid is Title Wave, right? There's been no discussion of precluding that. The only discussion and the only vote up is that existing lease as written moved through Real Property Committee, moved through, in some discussion form, the Ways and Means Committee, that we would not renew that lease. That's it. Right? So all this other conversation about, you know, everybody's trying to throw them out is just what it is. It's conjecture on the part of social media and others. It has not been an active council discussion. So with that, I would, you know, entertain any other, you know, discussion with that, but I think in the interest, before we get to a vote, I'll get through the rest of this, if I may. Discussion of a request by landlord for the City of Isle of Palms to modify covenants or restrictions located at lots 54/55 between 34th and 35th Avenue to conform to intent of the parties inconsistent with previous actions of the council on similarly situated lots. There was a lot that, I hopefully did a great job with this, Julia, that did not, even though it was two lots and intended to be two lots, there was not an established property line between those two lots. So we are not going against the grain of the discussion of subdivision, but simply to allow this family to take the two lots as originally intended and place that line that was missing from their deed. Julia, you're nodding. I think I'm okay on this.
We're okay, and we can always suspend the rules of order and have the lawyer for the families here, and she can give you a history and explain it.
Yeah. So what we wanted to be clear in the Real Property Committee is that we're not doing something different than the other discussions on subdivision, and we were assured at the Real Property Committee that what we're doing is completely copacetic, and that we do not have a problem with moving forward with this. And I would, you know, on behalf, maybe suspend, you know, make a motion to suspend the rules of order and allow this one to be closed.
I'll second that.
All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, just go into item two.
We just voted to suspend the half, right?
Yes. So item two is the consideration of requests for landlord of the City of Isle of Palms to modify covenants and restrictions related to lots 54, 55 between 34th and 35th Avenues to conform with the intent of parties. And Mr. Krawcheck is here also, and-
I'm Beth Settle.
Yes. It consists with the-
How'd I do in that explanation?
You did well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Beth Settle with Womelbon Dickinson, and I represent the Sheridans who own lots 54 and 55 on Isle of Palms, which is front beach, 3404 Palm Boulevard. With me is Leonard Krawcheck, who represents the proposed purchaser. The Sheridans bought lots 54 and 55 in 1957, and then many of you probably know that in 1991, the Beach Company approached all the front beach lot owners and offered to sell them the land in front of their lots if they wanted to remain front beach lots. And it was the accreted land up to the mean high water mark, and they were sold with the restriction that the front, the accreted land would become part of the lot behind it. But you couldn't build on the accreted land except for walkways and gazebos. In this case, the Sheridan family owned two lots, and they gummed up the restrictions. So if you own lot 30, the Beach Company would sell you lot 38, the accreted land, and the restriction would say 30 and 38 will always convey as one. With the Sheridans, because they owned two lots, they said 54 and 55 and 54A and 55A will always convey as one. Further up the beach, the only other lots I could find, 69 and 70, had the same situation. Those two lots were owned together, and they made the same mistake, and 69, 70, 69A and 70A were stated to say they would all convey together. Also, in 1992, after the Beach Company sold all these lots, they conveyed their rights to enforce the covenant to the City of Isle of Palms. So this council has the right to enforce those covenants. So with 69 and 70, when they realized what had happened, they came to council and asked them to modify the covenants to say, no, the intent of the parties was that 69A and 69 would convey together, and 70A and 70 would convey together, and Mayor Carmen Bench signed a waiver of those restrictions. So we're asking this council to do the same thing for the Sheridans with 54, and say that 54 and 54A will convey together, and 55 and 55A will convey together. And the property committee approved that, and we're asking the council to approve that as well.
Mr. Joe Bruce?
Second.
Any discussion? Just real quickly, I can add a little bit to it. My parents lived across the street from the Sheridans for many decades, and I know exactly the situation, have watched it all over the years.
Right.
So I understand it. Anyone else? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Here are none?
Thank you very much.
Randy?
Yeah, I'm picking up where I left off here.
There's another action I-
Yes, referring Randy down.
Let me get my place here, Desiree, point me.
Well, we got a consideration request.
Oh, the quitclaim deed. I'm going to read from Ted, so I don't have to rifle through my own paper here. So there is also consideration of request by homeowner for a quitclaim deed from the city for an unopened portion of 33rd Avenue of 2,532 square feet. I would ask for some help from Desiree and Julia on this. I believe this is another, more or less procedural item that just needs cleanup.
Correct. And also, I think the attorney representing that buyer is here, if y'all have any questions. This is a paper route on 33rd Avenue between Cameron and Hartman. It never developed, so the right of way was then split among the adjoining property owners, four property owners, and there's one that we still need to do a quitclaim deed like the city did for the other three in order for them to get their title. So we recommend, we recommend the city to-
So I, you know, I'll just make a motion to approve the quitclaim deed.
Second. Discussion. Discussion. This is something that's been there, existed for many years, and again, it's a cleanup thing. Here are no other discussion. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Ayes have it. Sorry y'all had to wait so long.
Yeah. It's a good outcome, though.
He wants to go sailing, I don't know what he wants to do. Not tonight.
Okay. Third item, consideration of notification to Title Wave Water Sports that the city has no intention to renew the lease as is or to exercise the lease renewal option. And again, this is specific to the existing lease. This is not a preclusion of any other discussions with Title Wave regarding their ability to remain at the Marina. So I would like to make a motion to notify them that we are not renewing that lease as writ.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir.
If the city intent is to pursue working with Title Wave in the future, I would request that we do it sooner than later, instead of leaving them hanging out there.
Can I, if I may, comment on that?
Yes, sir, you may.
And I'm, you know, and I apologize for always being the bad guy. But I think if you look at the process we're attempting to go through as it relates to the entire Marina, and I'm asking you, those that know the Marina, to visualize, the city controls 41st Avenue to the terminus of 41st Avenue from Waterway. The city has a lease with Title Wave today that expires at the end of September 2020. The city is going through similar process with Jay Clark right now of Morgan Creek Grill. So the property, and, you know, right or wrong, I've got my own views on this, when we go out to bid for the restaurant, that is the primary key financial asset remaining for the Marina down there. So we can try to move forward with Title Wave now, or we can go through the process, it says, which I think we've been very diligent, working with Desiree and hiring Lee and Associates, to tell us what the art of the possible is, right? Right? Now, we start carving out pieces of this and moving separately on these items without thinking about the order by which these processes need. You know, if a restaurant bidder comes along and says, I would be interested in doing this for- this for X amount of dollars to the city, however, you just took away sections of real estate, I don't think we would be doing our job in following good process and good business logic, right? So, you know, I get the emotionalism, and I absolutely empathize with Michael and Mark on being caught in a lurch, if you will, but I have the same concern for Jay Clark sitting over here, right? You know, we're not, we're not out negotiating with Jay right now, who has significant financial upside or downside. Let's go through the process, do it in an orderly manner, let the process go where the process goes. The only obligation this council had before September, which we knew we would not conclude any balance of the Marina discussion, we knew we would not preclude, we would not be able to consummate that prior to the natural termination, if you will, or notification of this particular lease with Title Wave, right? So I think Real Property Committee was fairly clear on this, that we wanted to follow this process. That's why it moved through the way that it did, and why it came before this council for the vote that's here right now. So Sandy?
Yes, ma'am.
At our extensive discussion at Ways and Means, I think we came to a conclusion, or I thought I heard, that we needed to have a Marina workshop, so that we can determine what we want that Marina to look like. There's been a lot of work done. We've got pictures, we've got estimates, we've got what's possible, what's not possible. And in my mind, you know, we need to decide what we want to do with that side of the Marina, and I think we need to do that sooner rather than later, because all of these pieces are part of it. And I don't think we can talk about Water Sports, or we can talk about the restaurant or anything else. If we, in our own minds, don't know what we want it to look like eventually, or right now, or what we can do and cannot do. We know we're not going to spend four or five million dollars. People soundly discussed that and said, no, we don't want you to spend that kind of money. But we need to find out what we do want to do. And so I would suggest that we work diligently to get a date and have that workshop and get our minds around this, and then we can be clearer with what we're going to do with Water Sports and the restaurant.
And none of that will happen before the notification period of this current lease?
Right.
I'm not saying we won't have a workshop before then, but I'm just saying any conclusion from that would not be, it wouldn't change the discussion that we're having about the existing lease.
Yes, sir.
So I think I would agree with council member friends that we need to have that discussion and with council member, or that we need to have it very soon. So we need to get that scheduled, and I would give that direction, or suggestion to you and direction to staff. I think we hear that loud and clear from everybody we heard tonight, and it will happen in a very near future. I think everybody needs to catch their breath after the last couple of weeks, but it will happen.
Well, there's no breath.
And Jimmy, for full, that's a full council workshop, that's not a real property workshop.
That's a full council.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry, I was just getting going. I wanted to comment on the Thems and Title Wave Sports, and I think, you know, what's obvious, and I won't rehash all of the comments that came up, is there's really great qualities about those guys and the way that they're running their business, and this agenda item, to reinforce what council member, I'm sorry, Bell said, is not about whether or not we want them to continue doing business, whether or not we like them, it's about the lease itself and the way it's written. And they have acknowledged themselves, it's not a great lease, because they came forth very wisely, I would say, with their own idea of here's what a lease should look like.
Gross income.
So we're not even voting on that lease, we're voting on the existing lease as it's written. So if anything, you know, a vote in favor of saying, we don't want this lease, vote to say, we don't want this lease, is to say, this was a poorly written lease and we won't support it. And that's it, and that's all.
That's right.
And, you know, it's great to see here the outpouring of support from the community, and I commend you guys on the way that you run that business and the way that you conduct yourselves. And, you know, I hear them talking about their kids working for you, and I would, you know, love for my seven-month-old daughter to be able to work there one day, so.
Keep it open, yeah.
Okay, Susan.
So a clarification, that the two situations with Morgan Creek Grill and Title Wave are not exactly the same. We're talking about one lease that has totally been exhausted, and another lease...
They exhausted in September and October 2020.
It's last period of renewal.
But the Morgan Creek lease has been, is going at a point where it's at the end of life, where the Title Wave...
Could have been renewed under these terms.
Title Wave, okay. So it's not exactly the same thing, and so I don't know if we firmly established when we go out for an RFP, when we put it out to bid and invite other people to, I mean, can you speak to that in terms of, we're trying to set a policy where we, when we allow other people to bid, but this is not the exact, please speak to that. Do you know what I'm saying?
I sort of do.
Can I, I think I can clear.
Okay.
I'm gonna, can I give it a go? Because the option is to renew the lease as written. So you're right in that they're different situations, but if we don't renew it as written, then we're in the same situation, because we're not renewing it as written.
Okay.
Okay.
Because it's a new, it becomes a new situation.
So for clarification, last Tuesday, the motion was defeated to accept a five-year extension, which exists and they have the right to ask for. But since there's dissatisfaction with the financial terms of the lease, in that process to negotiate that, so it was an effort, that would be my motion, to try to bring both parties together. Given what we heard tonight, one might think that's still a reasonable option. I appreciate kind of starting from scratch, clearing the decks. If we all get on the same page of what this Marina is going to look like in the future, a wonderful goal. I'm concerned that it took three years, all the meetings, the investment, the consultants, to get to a place that we punted to the referendum. I believe it was an issue of indebtedness, not the plan, because our citizens had plenty of input, and we revised that plan multiple times. So that's a distinction. We could accept the provision in the current lease, but renegotiate it. Last week, we chose not to do that.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just have, I want to clarify something quickly. The code does not require the city to put out a request for proposals method for any bids, it's an alternative. But I do recall, I think it was last year, a motion was made that the city and city staff pursue any new contracts and new leases through the request for proposals method. So that's where my recommendation was coming from, in trying to be consistent with the direction from council.
So I guess my question is, though, at what stage does that apply, when you still have options available? It just...
It just applies in any renewal.
And otherwise, I would just support, does this mean we're voting on this, I think we've talked about wanting a workshop, should we defer this vote until after we do the workshop?
We, the vote, the motion is to not renew the lease, and we're gonna have...
As written.
As written.
This lease.
And then we're gonna have a workshop, a citywide workshop, that we're gonna look at the vision for the Marina. Yes, ma'am?
I haven't talked on, spoken on this yet.
Absolutely.
So if this comes to pass and we don't renew this lease, I think we need to have some sort of very stringent guideline in terms of time, that we make a decision so the Title Wave does know exactly what their future holds. I mean, this is just not fair to do this to these wonderful guys who have given, I mean, they have been really great tenants, and we've watched them grow, and it's been, you know, it's, listening to the testifying, you know, you can't help but be moved by what they've done for the community. But we, we have to be good landlords and let them know what the future holds for them, I mean ASAP. So I'm only comfortable if we can all commit to having a timeline.
No disagreement, but interesting coming from the prior Real Property Committee member that recommended that the lease be notified the last time in 2017, right? This has been punted over and over again on these lease terms.
Well, we need to make...
Right? No disagreement with what you're saying, but you cannot, you, there has to be an order to how we do things with all of the real estate at the Marina. And, you know, I look at this, and I go, this, you know, doing anything in advance of that order would feel like getting married and then asking for a prenup after you've made that agreement, right? We don't want to do that, right? We want to know exactly where we're heading with this Marina. I agree, there were many good elements of the referendum. One thing we're sitting here looking at, somehow or other, somebody somehow is going to spend as much money as was in that referendum, right? It's our responsibility to go through the process as smartly as we can with a sound eye to fiduciary responsibility. That is all I'm trying to do, sitting here. That's it.
And if I have one talking here, we also have an opportunity now with both tracts of land coming open in 2020. And we kind of know that these guys have done a great job down here. We also know that we have residents who want water access, not to fish, because you're not going to catch a fish down here, but to launch a kayak or whatever. So, I mean, there's possibilities, and I think we need to remain open-minded when we go into this vision with council, concerning the Marina. Yes, ma'am?
But I do think we should all come to that workshop, understanding that we need to make a decision. We can't, just can't talk for three or four hours and say, oh, I want this, I want this. I think we need to take the responsibility of saying, okay, this is what we're going to do. We've got as much information as we'll ever have, it's been three years, and we've got everything. So let's really go into that workshop, saying, when we come out, we will be able to know what we can tell Water Sports, what we can tell the restaurant, all the information we can gather. But let's don't just have a workshop and just talk around it and not make a decision.
Okay, anybody else?
I will, I'll quick, because I haven't spoken yet. And I think it's, yeah, I haven't spoke at all tonight. The, the idea that we have a family infrastructure down there right now, and we have a dock that just collapsed, and I'm sure people are aware, we have a piling gone, we have part of a dock that's collapsed, and there's many other finger peers that are about to go as well. To get rid of a potential revenue source, I think, I think seems a better, I think we need to look at it, we definitely need to have a better, a better lease agreement. And like I said, the Thems have tried to come up with something. I think we, as, with the Real Property or City Council, need to work with them, figure out what needs to go in there. You get, if we do not have somebody there, then we have a dock that has zero, zero income for maintenance and upkeep. You know, we'd love to renegotiate a lease where the upkeep is on them, you know, and so it's zero, you know, impact to the city, as well as a greater revenue source. So, while I don't agree with the, with the lease that's written, I see this differently from the Morgan Creek lease, they were at the end of their term. We are at a point in this lease where either party can make changes. And I think that we're at that point now, and I think we need to initiate and make some changes to it and then move forward with Title Wave.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But just to put it in perspective, if I'm Title Wave and all the folks who came, probably 20 to one, right, in favor, if this motion proves, they understand that they're no longer, when this lease expires, that's it, there's going to be some new vehicle, if, but if, when we have our planning session, we come out with some active private water activity there. And the risk to me as that businessman is, I might not come out of that session with that, or the citizens that spoke for them. That's the message we're sending, and tell me if I'm misunderstanding.
I mean, I always take the contrarian position, it's not supporting one way or the other, but I'm pretty sure had we gone out on social media and rounded up people and said, we're going to do a public dock, we would have a lot of people sitting in the audience on the other side of the equation supporting it. We don't know what the public wants, right? You can't take a segment of something without having a broader discussion that really involves all the community and say that you've made a decision representing the majority of the island. So, to me, you know, granting something in advance of that discussion is not what we're up here for, right? Most of us sitting here that ran in this last election were asked to represent the residents, right? And whether you like it or not, the Marina referendum was defeated two to one, right? So we can all have conjecture on why that was defeated. Like I said in the prior meeting, no one spoke louder than I did, and I can tell you, it wasn't just the finances with the people that rallied around that particular issue. Let's have an intelligent discussion, like it's been recommended, involve the community, and get all aspects of this and make that decision going forward. But right now, let's not try to modify what the intent of this motion was.
Susan.
I would like to make an amendment to the motion that we renegotiate, that we, that we renegotiate, enter into renegotiations with Title Wave.
I'll second that.
Now, any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, please.
In terms of seeking input, which we should do, our own collective input and the public, in fairness, that's been done. The one plan that we have, which was vetted for two years, included significant public input, and in that plan, it has an active waterfront activity. That's what we have, that's what the citizens told us they wanted as part of that plan, just to balance the scales a little bit here.
Okay, so the amendment is to renegotiate a lease, is that correct, Maureen?
Yes.
Okay.
And I understand, before we have any discussion about the Marina as a whole...
I don't believe so.
That's what, that's what...
That's what she's saying.
Okay.
If I understand her, and that's why I want a clarification.
That's, that's, that's the amendment, before we have discussions on the Marina. Is that correct?
Well, I can modify that to say we renegotiate, taking into account a council workshop on the Marina.
Excuse me.
That's good. Money.
I, I...
Well, then just leave it that we renegotiate it with no specific timeline.
Okay. We had that, we had a second, any other discussion on that, on the amendment, which is renegotiating the lease? All of those?
No, I think what we're trying to do is try to find a way to, you know, I'm at work with the Title Wave, and otherwise, I mean, I don't see where we're going to bring this back up. And I, like, whether it's through the meetings that we have, whether it's through whatever, we don't have to have a lease, a negotiation presented to them next month, so...
Jimmy, if I may, and, you know, sometimes you have too much information, and that information has been well pointed out, because the way it flows through committees, it's not always shared across the board. We do not know, right now, the OCRM permits are for eight jet skis. We do not know if OCRM is going to come back and say the 16 that is in the lease is okay. We do not know what they're going to say about the center line. We do not know whether or not the right thing and the only way to keep business continuity for these guys is to give up a portion of the Morgan Creek Grill dock, because the Corps doesn't approve the center line violations, right? There are many open issues here, right? Entering into a negotiation until we have answers from the authorities that are responsible for permitting, I just, maybe it's just me, but I'm very process-oriented in getting through these issues.
I'd like to make a motion that we defer this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, wait.
Yeah, yeah, we got too much.
I'll withdraw my second from...
She's got to withdraw.
Yeah, I'll...
So there's an amendment on the floor. There's an amendment on the floor made by Councilwoman Burson and seconded by Carol Rice. We need to vote on that amendment.
Or withdraw.
Or withdraw.
Or withdraw the motion and the second.
I'll withdraw.
And I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so amendment is gone.
Back to the original motion.
Back to the original motion, which is the lease itself.
And I'd like to defer, I would like to make a motion that we defer...
Until we have...
Until we have all of this information that Randy just pointed out so beautifully.
Hold on one second, because we have an original motion. We have an original motion on the floor, you need to vote on the original motion.
Or withdraw it.
Or amend it.
Or amend it, and she, can we not amend it to defer it?
No, you have to withdraw it.
I think we need to have a rule, we don't vote on anything after three and a half hours.
That's the best thing I've heard all night.
Rule to withdraw?
No.
No, okay, so we don't.
You can't, you can't do that?
So...
Can I make one more comment?
Yes, sir.
Because I think that we're voting on whether or not we want to approve the existing lease. We've already voiced, and we've already heard from Real Property Committee, we've already seen that these guys, we know these guys are willing to be creative, they've been creative as long as I've seen them in council, and coming up with ideas, coming up with ways to work with us. I know the Real Property is looking for ways to work with them. By terminating this, by saying we don't want this lease to continue, which we've all, everyone... By terminating this, by saying, we don't want this lease to continue, which we've all, everyone, there's consensus there that the lease as it is isn't going to proceed. That's all we're voting for. Why don't we just go ahead and vote for it because we've all said it? And then we can get on to the business of negotiating.
Yeah.
And then the real property, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, please.
Sorry. I hear, I do hear what you're saying, John, but I think that to just kill it before we have more options on the table is concerning to me. And it feels, you know, I just feel like that we should have a way, an avenue that's working together already in place before we just cancel this lease. I'm just not totally comfortable with canceling it without all the information that we've been waiting for. So I'm just, that's my...
Ma'am, especially to Carol and Susan, the issue of regulatory items in any lease, renegotiate it, I'm sure the existing one, you have a provision that states it has to comply with all regulatory matters. So that's a red hair.
So to be clear, I'm not comfortable negotiating as chairman of real property, financial terms that are apart from this. It is a separate process. And just as Personnel Committee exercises their rights to say, this is how personnel works, this is the vote that, I'm not withdrawing the motion, to be clear. So if you don't agree with it, vote against it. That's every council member's right. But I think we owe them to know where that lease is. It does not preclude any further discussions unless the lease starts to put some of these items behind us.
Okay, we are clear, we are voting on not renewing the lease as it stands now. All those in favor of not renewing the lease as it stands now signify by saying aye. Aye. Raise your hands, please. Okay, nays. Okay, motion passes not to renew the lease. But please keep in mind, we're going to be meeting real soon.
Because we don't, we don't need this.
Yes, okay. All right, let's move on, please. Reports from city officers, boards, commissions, accommodations, no meeting. Boards of zoning appeals, minutes attached. Planning commission, minutes attached. Reports in special or joint committees, none. Petitions received, none. Bills already in possession of council. Second reading, ordinance 2019-05, an ordinance amendment title seven, chapter one, business license of the city of Isle Palms Code of Ordinances regarding an increase of short-term rental license fees. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Yes, sir.
The fact that this is changed by ordinance means that it's something that we do very infrequently. So we talk about the extremity of doubling rental, I don't know, it's hard for me to say what's appropriate because when you wait twelve years before amending fees, it's difficult to really say, is this the right amount? But I do think that it feels egregious to increase something that much. But when you do it so infrequently, because it's by ordinance, it has to be sort of extreme.
Bingo.
Okay, any other discussion? Yes, ma'am?
I just, and I wasn't in favor of this from the get-go with this extreme. I just feel like it's very aggressive and I just can't support it.
And, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Wish it was more agreeable, Carol, wish it was more gradual.
And for my, oh, yes, ma'am, please.
Just, you know, to repeat John's statement, you know, when you don't do it for this long, if you did it every year 1%, then it wouldn't feel so bad. But you don't, you wait twelve years or fifteen years to make any changes. So I think we're in the position where we're catching up. We have been losing all of this revenue. And now we're catching up because we know we have to find new revenue sources.
Yes, sir.
And you're balancing a budget based upon these items that we're about to...
That's exactly right.
Anybody else? If you don't mind me, I'm going to have one say in this. I just feel that we are shooting the goose that lays the golden egg. This is an industry that really we survive on, on Isle Palms. They pay 300% more in property taxes as second homeowners or vacation rentals. And then the rentals have the ATX fees on there. So y'all know the monies that come in. I've said my piece, that's the end of it. Anybody else? All those...
That's right, that's right. But they don't have a voice.
They don't have a voice. Okay, so all those in favor of this fee increase signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And nays?
Nay.
So that's five-four, is that correct?
Correct, it passed five-four.
You'll switcheroo.
Okay, second reading, ordinance 2019-06, an ordinance amending title three Public Works Article, a stormwater management utility increase. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
That's a motion. Very second.
Second.
Okay, we're going from forty-eight to seventy-two dollars. Any other discussion? Discussion?
I'm tired.
You're tired. Hearing none?
The only thing I have to say about this is, I mean, the fee is across the bar the same, no matter, whether you have a 1,200 square foot home or a 4,500 square foot home. While your impact is going to be different, your fees are still going to be the same.
And it's something we can probably address later on, too, Ryan. I think that's a good point. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor increasing the fees signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Two nays. That was John Moy and Ryan Buchanan on the nays.
Okay, I just didn't see Ted's vote.
Ted, did you vote?
I voted in favor.
Okay, just make a check. Okay, second reading, ordinance 2019-07, an ordinance amending title, planning and develop chapter four zoning article two district regulations. This is about lot size. And I really kind of think we should probably send this back to planning. We've talked about this earlier. I think there's some unintended consequences with it. Would y'all agree with this?
Is that a motion?
We don't need a motion, just...
Right.
Recommendation.
Yeah, recommendation that is about the planning commission and just don't take any actions.
No action tonight, going back to planning. Yes, ma'am? Still talk.
But it is, it is in place now, since we've had public hearings. The actual structure of it, okay, that's the most important thing.
So we can't have subdivisions.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
So do we need, we don't need a motion?
No.
You said, okay, I'm sorry.
Resolution to increase franchise fees with Comcast from 3% to 5%. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Hear your second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have, Mr. Mayor, I have internal conflict with this one. First of all, the same aforementioned conflict with franchise fees being essentially a tax. Now, with Comcast, it's not necessarily the case because you don't have to have Comcast. So you could make an argument that internet is becoming a necessary utility. But the problem that I have with this is that we have other utilities that compete with Comcast that are at a 5% franchise fee, AT&amp;T being one of them. Similarly, we have other providers that don't have any franchise fee at all. They're not using, they might not be using public infrastructure like DirecTV. But the point being, AT&amp;T and Comcast, we're giving what I would consider an unfair competitive advantage to Comcast. What I'd like to see is a reduction in the franchise fees. But I think that I have to support this so that we get AT&amp;T at least on the same place with Comcast and we can revisit reduction later on.
John, that's well said, because I mean, I really hate the so aspect of it, but it is an unfair advantage. Any other discussion? All those in favor, and I hate to do this one, but to increase the Comcast franchise fee from 3% to 5%, signify by saying aye? Raise your hands, ayes? Any nays?
Nay.
Two nays?
If it wasn't Comcast, I might be better.
I know, believe me. A resolution to increase permit fees to make it equal across the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Or building permits.
Building permits. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous. Okay, introduction to new bills, an ordinance to establish the standards for the placement of small wireless facilities in covered areas of the city of the Isle Palm, South Carolina for other purposes. This is a first reading.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
But we still have to approve it, right?
Yes.
So any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous. Ordinance 2019-09, ordinance amending title eight motor vehicles and traffic, chapter two stopping, standing, and parking of vehicles, article A standard provisions.
This is about the golf carts. It provides enforcement authority to the police department to enforce state law. I think, if councilmember B P N can address this during the public...
And this is by title only, but it's a...
This is by title only, correct.
Motion to approve, second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, one last. An ordinance to raise revenue and drop a budget for the city of Isle Palm, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, to ending June 30 of 2020. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Unanimous. Miss Alanas, none. Next meeting, 6:00 PM, Tuesday, May 21, 2019, council chambers. I do think we need to, real soon about that meeting with the Marina. Okay, do I hear, no executive session needed?
Motion to adjourn.
So, second? All in favor?[1796.41]